We're very happy to have you. If you will stand, please, for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're very happy to have all of our guests tonight. Welcome. Do we have any changes, amendments, additions or deletions to the agenda? Board members?
Amen.
Okay. Madam Superintendent?
I have just a few changes. So, the agenda was revised with the chairman's permission on June 4th to add items 9.03 and 9.04, and on June 6th to add item 8.29. There was a revision made today to items 9.03 and 9.04, and the board has been given a copy of those revisions.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We need approval of minutes from the workshop on May 6, 2024, regular school board meeting on May 13, 2024, and another school board workshop on May 23, 2024.
Go move.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Mathias and second by Mr. Brandenburg. All those in favor, let it be known by usual sign.
Aye.
We are now at a point where we're going to have some representation, and we always like that. The first of those is recognition of Tom Mock, Director of Internal Audit, and our Audit Committee. For any members of the audience who are not familiar with this, this is a committee that serves without pay, and we are very fortunate to have had some very fine people to do that, and we'd like to give them a little recognition tonight. So, Madam Superintendent, may we go down and present both?
We're going to start this evening with our soon-to-retire Director of Internal Audit. We want to thank you, Mr. Mock, for your many years of service, and if you'll come forward, Ms. Cunningham has something for you.
You want a speech? Forty years of speech.
We also want to recognize the members of the Audit Committee, who, as she says, have faithfully served the district as well, and I don't know if they're all here tonight. We have three of them here tonight. Mr. Kurt Benny, I don't believe, is with us tonight, but we certainly will give our thanks to him. We do have Ms. Chloe Bonds-Wormack here tonight with us.
Thank you so much for your service. We appreciate it.
And, of course, Mr. Vance Yocum.
Sir?
Thank you.
We know you talk, but, you know.
What are you doing? What did you say?
You just, that's all you're saying.
You're sending me to Utah? Are you talking?
You're just not paying attention.
Sure.
And Mr. Robert Tenary.
Thank you, sir.
Let's give them a big round of applause.
(applause) Would you behave?
Thank you.
And if you guys would follow us on podiums, so that the other board members can congratulate you.
We're going to give you all COVID. (laughter) Thank you so much for your service. Thank you very much.
Don't be a stranger.
Okay. Vance, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That assurance because they straightened out.
I'm working on it.
Thank you.
Bob, pleasure.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service. Well-recognized, so thank you.
I was promised Bitcoin, and they didn't give it.
Thank you very much for your service.
It is always a good thing when you can find good people in the community that are willing to work to make something better that is important to all of us, such as our schools. We are now down to some district athletic recognition. Mr. Hogan, our district athletic director, if you would come forward, please, sir.
Good evening, Superintendent, School Board, and Parents. Tonight, we have several teams and individuals to recognize as state champions. We'll start off with the Leesburg Boys, who were the 2A Olympic Weightlifting Champions under Coach Boyer, and Mr. Brandenburg can help me hand those out. If we could bring in the Leesburg young man. So, this boys, Weightlifting 2A Olympic State Champions, are back-to-back champions, which is a great accomplishment. The first young man is Jeremy Lacy. Come on up, Jeremy. We'll, not here, okay. Then we have Kayden Adams.[343.31][343.31](applause) Danny Englith.[348.13][348.13](applause) Jason Nguyen. Ryan Thompson.[353.13][353.13](applause) Zach Field.[355.13][355.13](applause) Savion Latimore.[357.13][357.13](applause) Jamar Williams.[360.13][360.13](applause) Theodore Prater.[363.13][363.13](applause) And Logan Thompson.[366.44][366.44](applause) We also have individuals who won individual state champions, and Jeremy Lacy was the 2A 119-pound class traditional state champion.[381.47][381.47](applause) And Kayden Adams was the 2A Olympic 129-pound class Olympic champion.[390.13][390.13](applause) That's our Weightlifters State Championship 2A Leesburg team. Give them a round of applause.[396.81][396.81](applause) And Coach Boyer, who I think I mentioned.[419.13][419.13](applause) Hard for me to see, but my peripheral vision isn't what it used to be. Great job, Coach.
Gentlemen, if you would come up on the dais, please. I'm sure Ms. Luke, you'll be happy to go down for this one. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mathias.
Mr. Mathias is going to help us.
I skipped right over here. I'm sorry, Mr. Mathias. Lake Mineola.
In Lake Mineola, we had Israel Clovis, who was the 3A 238-pound traditional state champion. Is Israel here?
I don't think he.
Okay. Our Israel Clovis, our 3A 238-pound traditional state champ. Congratulations.[538.13][538.13](applause) And young man who received two state championships last year, there's two more again this year, Kai Evans, who was the individual 3A state champion in the 110 hurdles and the 400 hurdles, and we will probably see Kai in the Olympics one day, is my prediction.[561.41][561.41](applause)
Would you announce it again?
Yes. Kai Evans was our 3A state champion in the 110 hurdles and also the 400 hurdles, and he's a regular for state championships here.[575.41][575.41](applause)
Could you also reintroduce the first gentleman?
Yes. Israel Clovis, our 3A 238-pound traditional state champion.[589.13][589.13](applause)
Now, it's Ms. Luke's turn.
Also want to thank our proud principals that are here tonight. We see Mr. Roberts from Lake Mineola, and Mr. Randolph was here from Leesburg just a minute ago.
I think we can skip this, because I know they're already proud.
Hey.
but two times recently under Coach Brittany Bell, and our first young lady to recognize is Adriana Covino.[693.04][693.04](applause) Brooke Mansfield.[695.63][695.63](applause) Brooklyn Bahida.[699.13][699.13](applause) Brooklyn Mason.[703.13][703.13](applause) Carson Roden.[708.13][708.13](applause) Chloe Zimmerman.[713.13][713.13](applause) Sierra Maple.[718.13][718.13](applause) Delilah Taylor.[723.13][723.13](applause) Emery Luke.[728.13][728.13](applause) Gabby Hiles.[733.13][733.13](applause) Jensen Luke.[738.13][738.13](applause) Kylie Walker.[743.13][743.13](applause) Katie Short.[748.13][748.13](applause) Kaylee Amidia.[753.13][753.13](applause) Kalen Bublitz.[758.13][758.13](applause) Kendall Kemp.[763.13][763.13](applause) Lilly Smith.[768.13][768.13](applause) Kenzie Tackett.[773.13][773.13](applause) Skylar Cloud.[778.13][778.13](applause) Skylar Scott.[783.13][783.13](applause) Turney Thomas.[788.13][788.13](applause) Taylor Goff.[793.13][793.13](applause) And Jenna Marshall, our favorite bad girl.[800.13][800.13](applause) Let's give these ladies a big round of applause.[804.13][804.13](applause)
I know we want Coach in the picture as well.
Great job by the team and Coach Beal's coaching staff.
I guess they're not coming.
It's all the clinking. It's such a good sound. Congratulations, ma'am. My birth, too. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. 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 Oh, snap. Congratulations.
I'll see you tomorrow. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Good job. Congratulations. 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 Oh, snap. Next team. Congratulations. 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 Thank you, parents and grandparents and family for being here tonight to celebrate with us.
And I'd like to congratulate my fellow board members. You guys represented well tonight. Just watch out, we're coming for you.[932.13][932.13](laughing) At this time, we're going to ask Ms. Laura Campbell to come up. She has public input. Ms. Campbell, you have three minutes. Could you state your name and address, please, ma'am?
Thank you. Laura Campbell, 1016 Longville Circle, Tavares, Florida 32778. Yay, I got it right. Hello, everyone. My name is Laura Campbell. I'm a Floridian, a Florida native, born at Naval Air Station Jacksonville in September 1976. Thank you for letting me speak today, and I would like to begin by expressing my appreciation for the efforts made to safeguard our children. However, it's important to direct our attention towards genuine dangers rather than imagined ones. Frankly, none of us who are in this room that are 18 years or older grew up with the fear that our government would ban the books that we read. Children require awareness of the world around them, as it is essential for them to comprehend that people possess different diverse backgrounds and experiences. Certain individuals tend to make broad, bold claims suggesting that specific books can influence a child's sexual orientation. However, it is critical to note that there is no scientific evidence to support such assertions. Additionally, why is there such a level of concern regarding children being educated about families like mine? Why is it distressing to some that at the age of 18, my child revealed their transgender identity, which was met with love and acceptance from our supportive family? I often hear the phrase parental choice, but let us confront the reality here. By banning books, one takes away choices from parents who may hold different opinions or adhere to varying moral standards. Prohibiting books signifies depriving individuals of opportunities. If a parent objects to their child reading a specific book, that is their prerogative, rather than something that should be imposed upon the entire community. Banning books can have detrimental effects on students' education. Through history, we have witnessed how books restricts, book restrictions limit exposure to diverse perspectives and impede critical thinking and hinder comprehension of the significant social issues. Books serve as an avenue to transverse the world without leaving our seat. We require those enchanting tales that ignite our imagination, those blissful conclusions that evoke a sigh of contentment, and those inspiring narratives of resilience to admire. By banning books, we forfeit all of these invaluable experiences. Censorship, who restricts information and discourages freedom of thought, undermines one of the education's key functions, teaching students to think independently. A survey revealed that 72% of participants confirmed that limiting access to books diminishes students' engagement in reading. More than a third of educators expressed that book bans discourage critical thinking among students, and 78% report that students are more inclined to read when given opportunities to choose banned books. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are now going to hear our Education Foundation report, Ms. Casey Edmondson.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent. My name is Casey Edmondson, and I'll be giving the report for Carmen in her absence this evening. Our Apple Mart Teacher Resource Store had 1,101 visits throughout the school year, which equated to approximately $169,000 of school supplies that were distributed to those teachers. We recently received another $50,000 from the Resiliency Grant for the VPK Expansion Programs at Tavares Elementary and Pinridge Elementary. Our Foundation Board has voted to fund the expansion of the VPK Programs at Rhymes, the CTE Childcare Program at Leesburg High School, and the Teacher Intern Scholarship Program in the amount totaling $200,000. We wrapped up all of our community literacy events at the end of the school year with New World's Reading Initiative, where we saw 475 attendees at our 10 events. Keep an eye out for those dates for the next school year at our various schools. The District Retirement Dinner was held on May 22 at the Venetian Center, where we celebrated 37 retirees. We even had a few of our board members in attendance. It was great seeing you guys there. Take Stock in Children hosted the Mentor Appreciation Gala on May 23, where we named David Peck and Ann Whitlock as the Lake County Mentors of the Year. For the next school year, we still need mentors at Eustace High School, Mount Dora High School, Tavares High School, and Umatilla. Red for Ed, our Community School Supply Drive kicks off on July 1, and the weigh-in for those businesses will be at the district office on August 1. If any local businesses are interested, please reach out to the Foundation Office to participate. Shred for Ed is being held at the district office on July 13 from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Anyone in the community is welcome to bring any paperwork that they need shredded. All we ask is that they donate school supplies to the Foundation. We will also be participating again at this year's launch into Lake, our new teacher orientation, sharing more about our foundation, and also providing lunch, sponsoring the lunch for those attendees at that event as well. We have purchased 1,500 backpacks and school supplies to distribute to the elementary schools based off FTE, and those will be distributed over the summer before the beginning of the school year. We will have a sorting or packing day at the Lake County Schools Central Warehouse on July 11. If anyone wants to come sweat it out in the warehouse with us, we always welcome volunteers. Our Stepping Out for Education event is being held next month on the 26th and the 27th at the Venetian Center. Saturday is already sold out, and we have three tables left for Friday evenings. Lastly, I do want to mention that our Executive Director position has been posted, and we are accepting applications for that until June 30. If anyone is interested, we can provide them with the information on how to apply for that position. Last month, our Foundation Board held our Strategic Planning Session at the district office, and this month's board meeting is being held on Wednesday, June 7 at 12 o'clock at the district office, and that's all I have.
Thank you. We appreciate all the hard work that you do, and it's very obvious that you do a lot. So, thank you for the report and for your hard work. Madam Superintendent?
We are on the Consent Agenda, and I recommend approval of Consent Agenda Items 8.01 to 10.05.
Go move.
Second.
It has been motioned by Mr. Mathias and second by Mrs. Luke. All those in favor, let it be known by usual sign.
Aye.
4-0. We have some items under our Discussion Agenda. We have a public hearing for Policy 5517.01. Got to get my script. Mr. Cole is not with us tonight, so bear with me. I will be doing his part. I opened the board meeting to a public hearing and read Policy 5517.01, Bullying and Harassment. That is before the board, this is coming before the board tonight for tentative approval. Is there any public member that would like to make a comment? I declare the public part open. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Madam Superintendent, may I have a recommendation?
I recommend tentative approval of the policy as presented.
Go move.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Mathias and second by Mr. Brandenburg. All those in favor, let it be known by usual sign of aye.
Aye.
4-0. Public hearing, final approval of Policies 0147.1, Travel and Per diem, 5780, Student-Parent Rights, 6835, Internal Audit Process, 6840, Audit Selection Committee, 8405, School Safety and Security, 8407, Safe School Officers, 8500, Food Service Programs. The meeting is now open as a public hearing. I have read the policies. If there is anyone in the public that would like to have public input, please come forth now. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chair, may I speak to the policy?
Yes, sir. where we saw 475 attendees at our 10 events. Keep an eye out for those dates for the next school year at our various schools. The District Retirement Dinner was held on May 22 at the Venetian Center, where we celebrated 37 retirees. We even had a few of our board members in attendance. It was great seeing you guys there. Take Stock in Children hosted the Mentor Appreciation Gala on May 23, where we named David Peck and Ann Whitlock as the Lake County Mentors of the Year. For the next school year, we still need mentors at Eustace High School, Mount Dora High School, Tavares High School, and Umatilla. Red for Ed, our Community School Supply Drive kicks off on July 1, and the weigh-in for those businesses will be at the District Office on August 1. If any local businesses are interested, please reach out to the Foundation Office to participate. Shred for Ed is being held at the District Office on July 13 from 10:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Anyone in the community is welcome to bring any paperwork that they need shredded. All we ask is that they donate school supplies to the Foundation. We will also be participating again at this year's Launch into Lake, our new teacher orientation, sharing more about our foundation and also providing lunch, sponsoring the lunch for those attendees at that event as well. We have purchased 1,500 backpacks and school supplies to distribute to the elementary schools based off FTE, and those will be distributed over the summer before the beginning of the school year. We will have a sorting or packing day at the Lake County Schools Central Warehouse on July 11. If anyone wants to come sweat it out in the warehouse with us, we always welcome volunteers. Our Stepping Out for Education event is being held next month on the 26th and the 27th at the Venetian Center. Saturday is already sold out, and we have three tables left for Friday evenings. Lastly, I do want to mention that our Executive Director position has been posted, and we are accepting applications for that until June 30. If anyone is interested, we can provide them with the information on how to apply for that position. Last month, our Foundation Board held our Strategic Planning Session at the District Office, and this month's board meeting is being held on Wednesday, June 7 at 12:00 at the District Office. And that's all I have.
Thank you. We appreciate all the hard work that you do, and it's very obvious that you do a lot. So thank you for the report and for your hard work. Madam Superintendent.
We are on the Consent Agenda, and I recommend approval of Consent Agenda Items 8.01 to 10.05.
So moved.
Second. It has been motioned by Mr. Mathias and second by Mrs. Luke. All those in favor, let it be known by a usual sign.
Aye.
4-0. We have some items under our discussion agenda. We have a public hearing for Policy 5517.01. Got to get my script. Mr. Cole is not with us tonight, so bear with me. I will be doing his part. I opened the board meeting to a public hearing and read Policy 5517.01, Bullying and Harassment. That is before the board, this is coming before the board tonight for a tentative approval. Is there any public member that would like to make a comment? I declare the public part open. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing. Madam Superintendent, may I have a recommendation?
I recommend tentative approval as the policy is presented.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Mathias and second by Mr. Brandenburg. All those in favor, let it be known by a usual sign of aye.
Aye.
4-0. Public hearing final approval of Policies 0147.1, Travel and Per diem; 5780, Student Parent Rights; 6835, Internal Audit Process; 6840, Audit Selection Committee; 8405, School Safety and Security; 8407, Safe School Officers; 8500, Food Service Programs. The meeting is now open as a public hearing. I have read the policies. If there is anyone in the public that would like to have public input, please come forth now. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Just want to make comment on the Audit Committee. After reading that, I thought two things. First, there was only, there's going to be three members on the Audit Committee. It only outlines where one of the Audit Committee members will come from, and then the other, it just says they have to be Lake County residents. So I thought it should be on the other two, just a little bit of descriptive of where the pool of choices is going to come from. And then under responsibilities, there's only one responsibility in that policy for the Audit Committee. Even though I know it's, this policy's high level, I thought there should be at least, you know, a couple of other things that the Audit Committee is going to be charged with as far as their responsibilities, even in a general sense. So I can send that to you if you'd like, but I just thought there should be something there other than just the selection of the auditors.
Okay. I would appreciate you sending that to me, and I'll share it with the other members.
I don't, I don't know the idea of where you're going to get the other Audit Committee members, but I just thought there should be something there that's kind of outlines where you're going to get them from. But I'm not sure exactly what your thoughts are on that.
Thank you. We appreciate you sharing your expertise. Mr. Yocum.
Well, I agree with Tom. I think that there needs to be more description of where you're going to get the people. As we've gone through this before about the qualifications for the people on the committee, and that otherwise, why have it? You know, just, and I go back to my earlier recommendation, which is this position should, the position of the Audit Director should report to the CFO, because they need to be with a family that understands their craft. And right now, there's no one there to do that except the CFO, who I have great confidence in. And I think that that should be where the Audit Director goes to report, and that they have an input, and matter of fact, maybe he ought to be on the committee too, because he does have a substantial experience in the field. And we're trying to reduce the number of levels of all the filters and the information getting back to you so that you have a better idea of what's, what's needed and the risks, areas that need to be reviewed. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? If none, we're going to close the public hearing. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I have a comment, because since this is final approval and none of this was brought to us during the tentative approval process, we can do this a couple of different ways. If you'd like for us to go back and, and look at any recommendations that they want to bring forward. I would suggest that we go ahead and approve it as is, and then bring it back with any recommended changes that we see necessary, or we can pull it and start the process all over again, but we will have to go back and, and start from the beginning.
What's the impact if we start from the beginning?
But as a point of clarification, isn't it, this is to select the auditor. It's not for Audit Committee. We're not doing Audit Committee anymore.
We still have.
No, this is a policy for the committee.
Yeah, you do have to have an Audit Selection Committee when you're selecting the, and Mr. Ward's going to have to tell me what word I'm looking for.
The auditor.
Yes, the external auditor.
Yes.
You're absolutely correct. So this is the committee that you would put together when it comes time to select an external auditor, which the board only does maybe once every three to five years. So the idea was, it may be a change in board, so when that decision came to the board, the board would have the ability to set the remaining members of that committee. So that's the reason why they were left basically open.
I read it the same way Ms. Luke did, yeah.
Because I'm like, wait, no. So, thank you. It's the pleasure of the board. I'm fine to vote on it tonight.
I am too.
Then I recommend final approval of the policy as presented.
So moved.
It's been moved by Mr. Brandenburg and second by Mrs. Luke. All those in favor, let it be known by a usual sign of aye.
Aye.
4-0 passes. Next item is the selection process for Director of Internal Audit. I had asked Mr. Ward to include this. Mr. Ward, do you want to make any comments before our discussion?
Just, just to remind the board that I sent out, there were, there were four qualified applicants that went through HR's process of review, and I forwarded those four to you guys, and we just need some direction as to what you would like for us to do. Would you like to, for us to contact all four and set up some type of, maybe a budget, or not a budget workshop, but a workshop where you can interact one-on-one with them? Would y'all like to narrow that down? Would y'all look, you know, whatever, just whatever you guys want to do? Just have an opportunity to communicate to the Superintendent, and I will make it happen.
Thank you.
Scott, just one second. Mr. Ward. Are these only four applicants that applied, or?
There were, there were a lot of applicants that did apply, but they didn't meet.
You've already called it down to four.
I did not. HR did, but they didn't meet any of the, of the recommended qualifications.
The four?
No, the, the others. These were the only four that met the qualifications. Sorry, I didn't say that correctly.
Falt.
I think that we should interview all four of them.
I agree.
Or maybe, maybe the interview, let's, let's have them present their vision.
At a workshop?
At a workshop.
Okay. Ms. Luke?
That's fine.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Do we need a motion? Can we just say we, that's what we want?
I think right now, this item would just require some direction to, to staff to go ahead and schedule the workshop and invite the individuals to come in and do a, a presentation for you all, a chance for you to ask questions.
So, Mr. Ward, can you help, can you set that up for us, please? I believe the direction is, we'd like to meet all four in a workshop. Thank you, sir. Madam Superintendent, your report.
Well, congratulations again to all of our tremendous athletes who are recognized this evening. It's always exciting. Summer is, learning is continuing here in Lake County. We have summer reading camp going on for our third grade students, and we are also today, registration open for our early learning program. So we've done this the past couple of summers. Students that are entering kindergarten and eligible for the upcoming school year have an opportunity to get a head start in kindergarten. We know that this is a tremendous time for these students to get acclimated and to learn the way of doing school, and so we're excited that we can offer this again this year. So please go to our website and get more information if you have an entering kindergarten student this fall. Registration will continue through June 28, and the classes will begin on July 15. So a couple of weeks of, of great learning for these, our entering kindergarten students. And also, today, we kicked off our annual summer leadership conference at Arroyo M. Cole Academy. So thanks to our CIA Department and Mr. Felton and Dwayne Weeks and his team that did a lot of learning with us today. We have two more days this week, so board, you know, come on back out. Some of you were there today. It was a great day of learning, and I'm just very grateful for all of our leaders who came together today to do a lot of celebration of things from last year and to set up some visions and goals for the, for the coming year. Also, our HR department is busily at work as they always are. This is their biggest time of year. They've had a transportation job fair. That was last week. They had a virtual teacher job fair that's coming up Thursday, June 13. There's a hiring event for our Leesburg schools scheduled for next Tuesday, June 18, at Carver Middle, and a district hiring event on Wednesday, July 24, at Tavares High School. So details will be on our website for those events as well, so come on out to those as well. So a lot happening throughout the summer, and I'm again grateful to all of our leaders for all the, all the work today.
Thank you.
That's it? That's, that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Mathias?
I only have one thing. In seeing the, the volunteers that came before us from the Audit Committee, also one that could not be with us, he's with his son, is Kurt Benning. And Kurt has been on the board, on the Audit Committee, I think, prior to me, and then I drafted him and insisted he stay as long as I was on the school board. So he gets a break. But Kurt's an amazing CPA. He's been an amazing advocate for Lake County Schools, and I'm grateful that he had been my appointee. That's it.
Thank you.
Ms. Luke?
I will piggyback on that. I know my Audit Committee member also couldn't be here this evening. She has a family issue that they're taking care of, and she is in our thoughts and prayers, but has served me well for the past several years as well. And I'm appreciative of her service. It's hard to find volunteers that will spend the hours that they did and work in conjunction with all of you, and so I'm super appreciative of her. And the work that you have done for the District, Mr. Mock and Mr. Yocum, and your leadership in both of you as well. Thank you so much for serving in that capacity for us. I also wanted to recognize the City of Eustace and Mayor Holland for celebrating the Eustace softball team with us. It was a couple of weeks ago now, and I wanted to thank Mrs. Cunningham for attending in my, in my absence. The Superintendent and I got to spend the day together with the Commissioner of Education. We'll definitely have more to come on those with ideas and partnerships that we're working on, but I can guarantee you guys, I watched the live stream on the parade and might have cried because I wasn't there to celebrate not just the team, but my two daughters that are on the team. I know Mr. Dodd alluded to this in his last statement, just about, you know, some of the challenges associated with having, having children and being a board member, and I can tell you that one of the things that Jensen said to me, and she's probably ignoring me right now, which is fine, but her freshman year, she looked at me and said, "Mom, this is the one thing that people can't attribute to you." And so here we are again, three years later. And you both had such an integral part in all of the girls on that team, and it can be attributed to you and your individual work. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to all those young ladies on the team, and that I'm proud of you, and I'm not crying. Emery, the middle child is here as well. I also wanted to recognize Coach Brittany Beal. I know there's been tons and tons of social media broadcasts because of the state championships, but she was recognized as Lake and Sumter Style Magazine's Coach of the Year for 2024. And I can tell you one thing about her is the high expectation she has and the commitment to that team. So she definitely invests a ton of her time and resources into those girls, and obviously, the fruits of her efforts have been visible to all of you as well. And I would be remiss if I didn't say Lake and Sum, Lake and Style, Sumter Style Magazine have also been really good about celebrating not just athletes, but students for Lake County Schools and Sumter County Schools as well. And I know that it's been an uptick on social media that has been celebrating our children, and it really helps us to shine the light on all of the good that's happening in our schools. And so I just wanted to say thank you to them as we've kind of ending the celebration that's associated with state championships. And so this one's a little bit more special to me than most for obvious reasons, but I've been really grateful for the way the community has wrapped their arms around all of our student athletes and our academics. So, thank you.
Mr. Brandenburg?
Ditto, ditto. Mr. Mock, Mr. Senari, the Audit Committee, thank you for your service. You guys have made a lasting impact on the district, and I appreciate it very much. So thank you for all the time that you all gave to make sure that, that we're operating as effectively as we can. Vance, thank you for everything that you continue to do. I know we're still going to have you in the audience and, and sending us some feedback. So thank you in advance for all that's coming there as well. Congrats to Coach Boyer, Leesburg High School, weightlifting on another state title. Lake Minneola, Eustace High School, girls softball, congratulations. Very, very well deserved. Your mom is proud. No doubt about it, as she should be. Couple more quick ones. Ms. Cunningham and I had the opportunity to attend FSBA's Annual Conference last weekend in Tampa. And as I say every time, it's still sincere. I come back so energized and so thankful for the district team we have, the teachers and staff that we have, the students that we have, because we've got issues like many other districts do, but the level of professionalism and just wisdom that we've got throughout every part of this district does not go unnoticed. Those things, they are constantly trying to steal our staff, and they constantly cannot have them. Just very, very thankful for what we've built here, continue to build for the betterment of our students. Huge shout out to Mr. Felton, the CIA team, for a fantastic summer leadership day one this morning. Rob, you killed it on a two-hour presentation that could have gone for 6, 12, 24. You probably still could be going with a couple more Diet Mountain Dews, but you did a great job. Thank you for your leadership and what you did to make today's success. And last but not least, I want to give a shout out to Dave Parker. Dave Parker is leaving the district after many, many years of service as our Director of New Construction and Facilities. We are a much better district because of Dave and his team, and the impact of what Dave and them have done over the years will continue to live on. Dave's got a fantastic opportunity that he couldn't pass up, and we wish him well, but very thankful for the service he's given to Lake County Schools. That's all I've got.
Okay. Jensen and Emery, I want to share with you that there is a board member up in the panhandle, and she and I have a running bet. And I stalked her until I caught her in the elevator. And I had taken a picture from the parade, and I just held my phone up and I said, "So where's your team?" And she shared with me that Baker put them out of the championship, so. But just so you know, there are people all over who know about you ladies and your team, and it brings all of us a real source of pride. And I can't tell you how much we really think of you and how much you have made us proud, and we just look forward to you doing it again next year. I would also like to just say one thing about the close of school. Oh, I almost forgot the Audit Committee. Mrs. Womack is my representative, and she actually was the representative prior to my being elected to the school board, and she agreed to continue. So I certainly do appreciate that effort. I appreciate that work. And I had the pleasure of being the liaison to the Audit Committee. So for a year, I got to work very closely with everyone, including Mr. Mock. And Mr. Yocum and I met a long time ago, so we, we've been kicking it for a long time. And I know he's not going to go away. He's going to always be there to provide his opinion and his support, and we look forward to that. And Mr. Mock, I just want to wish you well. Want to wish you a happy retirement, and I hope that you enjoy all the things that retirement brings. And I want to say one thing about the close of school. I've seen a lot of closings of school years, but this year, I think, was phenomenal. Not just with all of our athletes doing well, but with the number of students we saw walk across the stage and the numbers of scholarships and the different places that our students are going. That's just a follow-up to let all of us know that we're doing a good job here in Lake County. We have a lot of evidence. We just need to sit back and enjoy it and continue to work at it. So thank you very much. If there's nothing further, I guess the meeting is adjourned.